Really in sideways and now they're gone. Grand Central Station down there.
Oh mercy.
Is water still dropping from the dam or is it?
The creek. But the water, the water on the dam is so.
But I mean, is it? Straight going down after all of the damage.
Alright. I'm glad you.
Visions to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, in the midst of a duty and justice.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Welcome, good to see the crowd again. We like that. All meeting in order, the agenda, anything to be added to us?
Motion to approve is printed in.
Second that, all favor.
Aye.
Minutes, it's a few seventeen.
No, it looks like for what's on there are correct, the motion to prove.
I will second.
All favor.
Aye.
All carry. Prove the claims.
Alright, looking through the claims, I had a total of seven, seven, four, three, three, nine, point nine, seven.
I double check Bruce's checking and that's correct, science. Looks like. New equipment and insurance was a big one this time.
And rock.
Correct.
We gave some rock payments.
Yeah, a lot of rock in there.
All favor.
Aye.
Oh. Public concerns, anybody wanna speak?
I'd like to speak. Um, and maybe this will be addressed later in the meeting if it's going to be, let me know. But uh, there was a board of adjustment meeting last Monday. And. The group was here as the board adjustments were here as well as the county attorney. And the county attorney has not been here or had anything to do with this and from my understanding of. Board supervisors had approved outside counsel for the Anderson forty. And. He was not here. And I'm wondering who is attorney of record on this uh, forty situation? I mean, there's uh, litigation or there's a hearing scheduled for July twelfth, I believe. And the. Board of adjustments comes out of the. Meeting with a uh. And scheduling a hearing for July one. Or not a meeting, excuse me, a hearing for July one. So why would you have that when you have a injunction hearing on July twelve?
Not sure what's.
I don't have no clue because I wasn't here and I'm waiting to hear what went on this meeting, so.
Randy probably speak better to that than I was, but. At the meeting, it was just a meeting and they did a nice job, went through what they've been doing. And went in a closed session and basically to come out and announce that there would be this. Uh, hearing on the Anderson forty on July one. But it just uh.
I'll reference that.
That this uh, this uh, left know what's, certainly know what the right's doing and. In visiting, I, I came back up to ask another question. In visiting with one of the. Members on the board of adjustment was not aware there was anything going on the twelfth.
I don't have any clue, so. Randy said he wanted to address it, so I guess.
Let's see what Randy's got to say and that might help clear it up a little. Well, the dress said it, eight forty-five, it looks like.
We got. Kyle?
Yeah, I would uh.
In attendance?
Give you an update on the river situation, where things are at, where we're going.
Uh, hopefully so, it's all going south.
All go, it's still going south. Good news is the uh, east fork of the Des Moines River will be cresting today. And it's still gonna crest at twenty-two point three feet, which is well above their flood stage, but still with the plan or flooding. So that's good news, which means the in, the problems that we're having in up north by Livermore and so forth. That will start to dry out, well, all the receiving waters, again, maybe we can open up those roads for a while. Uh, because they had just opened up, or we're close to getting it opened up, then it flooded again, so. Uh. The west fork of the Des Moines River, that's a whole different story, that is on the ride, we are gonna see the record flooding, obviously you've heard this, seventeen feet is what it's gonna crest at. And that will be Wednesday morning, uh, at. Seven AM, it's expected to crest, that includes, that amount includes what we already have on the ground up north. And it's funneling its way down, plus twenty-four hours in advance, any rain that will hit in that basin. So they've already calculated that in, so. If they get more rain tomorrow, that could affect.
Could have crushed, at the crest time, you mean?
It could actually increase the level that we would see further down and the time it would get here. Uh. We have a meeting today at ten o'clock with a lot of stakeholders. This meeting will uh, take into account the Mid-American Energy's shutting off power. To the flood impacted areas, they're looking right now at West. Uh, West River Road. And also they're looking at shutting down gas. For that, that area, and those people who are impacted have been notified from Mid-American Energy. Uh, we're gonna be discussing what we're gonna do for, for those people at that meeting. Uh, critical infrastructure for the city of Pumbal is looking good, the water treatment plant is not in danger. The lift stations are not in danger. So that's very, very good news. Uh, we don't, people have been asking, how much water are we gonna see into town? Nobody knows because we've never seen seventeen feet of water before, we've seen fifteen bore. But we've, nineteen sixty-nine, but we've never seen seventeen feet of water, Groenbeck is out doing shots on the south part of town. Level shots, where the water would come up. And we're looking at building a dike on the south part of town to help protect the south roads down by the recycling center. Other parts of the county that are affected by this, we've got Rutland. Uh, Suzy, she and I talked about possibly getting people out of the campground. Uh, whether or not that's, that's necessary or not, that's up to, that's up to her. Uh, and she can speak to that. Bradgate. We actually have a temporary dam in place. The trussel bridge for the Three Rivers Trail, it's holding back a ton of. Wood, of logs, trees, and it's actually causing the water to spread out. Rather than come, it's still coming down. But it's acting as a temporary dam. The Army Corps of Engineers will be coming out or could be coming out to help inspect that. Bridge to see if it's safe, if it's gonna take all of that extra weight. So we got a lot of people coming and a lot of resources coming, so that's awesome, we've been sandbagging like crazy. Over the weekend, we have. Moved, how many? Truck loads, eleven, twelve, or? Nineteen twenty truck loads of sand, uh, we've got nineteen, we've gone through fourteen thousand sandbags, we have another nineteen thousand on the ground from. I'll call it up, so. Moving forward. Any questions on any of this, anything I didn't cover, I'm coming through quick, but at noon today, we're gonna have a press conference. And get this information out to the newspaper and the radio station in a format that they can distribute to whatever.
Is there any way to get some of them logs and timber up and behind the bridge up there? Like a big excavator or something to reach out, pull them around or?
Because of the pressure against the backside of them, I don't think they're going anywhere. I think they're gonna be stuck there until some pressure is relieved and then they can potentially move forward. Uh, but the Army Corps of Engineers would be the people who would take a look at that type of thing, they've been there for a month. Yeah, they have, from the past flooding, that was that, that went down the west. And that was at twelve feet or eleven feet. So we're gonna see six more feet of water.
Well, we can't thank the, the people enough for the help or the filling the sandbags and. I guess my question is, I've had a lot of people say, what can we do? And someone said that, that they're filling sandbags, are they just gonna keep filling sandbags until? Or what are you doing, are you waiting till they, they need more or?
We've got it open up for anybody, individuals to come in and. Pick up sandbags, fill sandbags and pick up sandbag. Ben and I are working on a situation where we can uh, possibly get that truck back and do the rapid filling. Like we did this weekend of sandbags and a team from high capacity is interested in coming out and doing that. After I was on the radio this morning to put that out to folks. Uh, so I want them to contact me. And we'll put together a plan to get you folks or get folks out there to, to do mass sandbagging. We don't want them to do it this afternoon, if possible, because it is going to be hot and it's gonna be very humid and then we're causing problems. So, yeah, they can contact me and we'll get them lined up to groups to go out there, but there's bags out there, there's shovels, there's spilling stations, there's sand. For individuals to come in and get sand.
And the other thing I was. Told that we've had a few interested people that think that the river is now a good time to kayak and. No, they're the hell off the river.
Absolutely.
Away from it as far as you can, said it's a mess.
I met with a guy last night, um, when I was up at Bradgate and he said this is a great time to kayak and I chastised him, said, don't do that. Don't do that.
There's huge trees floating down and you don't know what's, you're gonna get hooked on, so just please, don't do it.
Yeah, stay away from it, yeah, yeah, it's crazy.
They had to rescue a kayaker yesterday in Spencer, in the town of Spencer.
Not the time.
No boats, no kayaks, no nothing, stay the heck out of it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kyle, for all of your new work.
Very welcome.
Stay with it.
Absolutely, well, I'm not going on vacation.
Well, after a week or two, you better.
Keep us informed, I thank you, I appreciate all that you're doing.
Bet, you'll give those reports again as soon as I get back, I haven't any time for that, you'll give those reports. And I'm gonna head that back down there.
Perfect, thank you again.
Thanks guys and gals.
Okay, Ben.
Glad to see that you're very safely found just today.
We're also paving on top of all of this, so.
That's going better than the river.
Cause why wouldn't we?
Wow, it's, you wouldn't know when you set up a paving contract that this is gonna happen.
No, no.
Last time you did the white top and we had snowed for a month.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't need the snow right away, but.
There's always something and uh, Dave's on vacation this week, so.
That's nice.
Let's talk about that.
Yeah.
The pitch.
Like he said, in, in thirty years, he's never missed a paving project with his vacation.
Make sure we remind you of that.
This year it happened, but um. Yeah, a couple of things for the agenda. Uh, the first is to approve contracts with Birdy and Sons for the building here in Dakota City. Uh, he's gotten me the signed contract, he's gotten me the tax exempt certifications for his subcontractors. And he's working on the uh, construction bond. But we can approve the contract now.
Everything's in order on it?
Yes.
You'd have a chance to look through it, you're no, no.
I mean, the, the contract is, is just the, the bid prices.
Right.
What we, what we okayed a couple of weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. I'll make that motion then, for Birdy and Sons.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All favor.
Aye.
All carry.
The uh. The next item is listed as approving the pay vouchers for projects X, Y, and Z, that was. Me hastily trying to get agenda stuff to Shauna because I was a day late. Uh, it is the three paving projects that we've talked about, uh, with Kroll Ready Mix. Uh, that'd be for projects STP, parent eighty-five. Uh, the farm to market, uh, parent eighty-six and the local eighty-seven. Um. Farm to market is, a majority of, of the payment has been made for that project as most of the. PC pavement has been placed. Uh, contractor milled through Renwick on Friday, so that's ready for blacktop service. Uh, they also milled through Hardy and they were gonna try and get through Thor as well. I haven't been through Thor today to find out if they made it or not. Um. Paving wise on the Hardy stretch, we are almost to two hundred and tenth street. Our goal is to try and get to highway three today. We have enough sand. Hopefully to make it to highway three today and then because our sand source is Erickson's pit. They're. Gonna be in a holding pattern unless they can find another.
So is that one lane or we, do they guess both lanes?
Good.
Yeah, with that much of. So, um. Yeah, they're in the process of trying to find a, an improved DOT sand source. To continue paving or else. They'll go on hold for a week. Uh, until they can get back into Erickson's bit.
So is that stock filed down there or is that Erickson's, it's just?
It's, it, they've been actively crushing and screening and stock filing.
Yep.
And but the road back in there is basically, it's gone, gone, so.
Get there.
So Ben, these are by percentage approximately amounts for these three different projects?
Yes.
I mean, where it's eight forty-four and eighty-three is at, makes sense.
Yeah, uh, for the most part, nothing's been done on our local project beyond milling and. The construction survey, they've got closures up, but.
They haven't done any.
We haven't done any paving, South Highway three.
Right.
So I would say that these are all pretty adequate as far as the percentages, if not a little bit low on the STP. Because our cutoff date was Wednesday.
Right.
And we paved Thursday, Friday, but, but it's to that date, it's, it's up, up to the end of day on Wednesday.
Correct, but this is all makes sense, obviously, as you explained it, when we do this as one motion. I would imagine, because it's all the same contractors or not?
Uh, yes, I believe you can do it all as one motion.
I would make said motion for payment of these three vouchers and it's Kroll, uh, Incorporated.
Hmm.
For the three listed projects.
I guess I would second and just let, you know, the, the one is the eighty-three percent like Eric said, one is the eight percent and one is the. Forty-four, so yes, stop the bomb.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All favors?
Aye.
Aye.
All carry.
I think that's Ben, I wish that's all you were working on right now.
Yeah, no, we uh, uh. Saturday, we had sand delivered, we retrofitted one of our. Uh, dump trucks with the tailgate sander. Um.
I've heard it was a huge success.
Took the spinner off.
Were there.
Yeah, so we took, took the spinner off and ratchet strapped the sand cones on where the spinner went.
Oh.
And just turned the auger to its slowest possible setting and. Yeah, pretty bold filling, I think the goal is to try and do that again today.
Awesome.
But as of right now, we're running, checking all of our roads and putting up more barricades. Um. New roads that are in the process of being closed or, or have actively been closed. Dakota City Bridge is getting ready to get closed, that was Angelique that just called me, so they need some help, uh, putting up barricades there by the museum. And they're gonna take care of their stuff here before you go down the hill. Bergmer Bridge, we put uh, barricades up on both sides of the road because of the amount of timber that's coming down river that's hitting the bridge, right? Um, Dorson Timber is also underwater, Hamilton's Road is. Uh, is underwater, Webster County closed. Uh, most of theirs, Saturday or Sunday, we threw an additional barricade up today where the blacktop ends. To stop traffic from going down there. Um. And then C twenty-six big clusters, but like Kyle said, the east branch should be cresting today, I believe. It, it's so. I know Prairie Creek is already starting to drop up in the northeast part of the county, um.
Oh, yeah, the good news is the east branch, because I believe it's Montana Avenue, just north of the Lott's Bridge Bridge, that mid where Smith Bridge.
Hmm.
So what, my place, water was actively going over the road a couple of days ago and it is not at all right now.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
North of that, you know, I'm talking, yeah, north of Lott's Bridge, you know, there's no water in the road.
There is.
So it is, and you can see that it's going out, so barring any more rain, east or vice is really in a good spot. I think that's slowly, but sure, you can just tell that, because that feeds, obviously not very far downstream directly into the east fork of the river, so. That's the only way that it's gonna not go over the road is it's getting a better out that, so that's good, I checked that and it's like, no, it is not at all. So.
Good.
Gaining there, not maybe so much over there and pray to God it doesn't rain anymore.
Right.
And just like the river, if there's barricade up, don't go around.
Don't go.
Just, we don't know what the road's like. In between. Please.
Yep. Don't do it.
Don't be driving on it.
Okay, hold on just a second. Okay, can you hear us, Rick? Can you hear us, Rick?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Sorry, I lost you and then I didn't, I have my phone muted, so I didn't see it ring.
Yeah, that was fine, Bruce, I, I went up and down a hill, so.
Alright. Well, I guess you know us, our numbers, so keep us in the loop and hopefully we find sand.
Same, if you get phone calls, respond to us.
I think you got critical areas covered. Just bear with everybody and don't drive where there's water, there's other ways around it. So they shut down one sixty-nine, only does the same deal.
Yeah.
That was a debacle. Been a long time, been a long time since that's happened, but that's how much water, yep.
Alright, thanks, Ben.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Red.
Just wanted to do two. One goes to uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you can have a more.
No, that's, I need to know that too.
I have two things that I need to discuss with you, the first one here. Uh, the board of adjustments met on the seventeenth. And uh, that was a meeting for uh, the Cole Anderson. Quarry application. And uh. We have, as you know, an uh, full board of adjustments, I reported that to you. And uh, by ordinance requirements, they have adopted a uh. Meeting and hearing procedure. Uh, to conduct their affairs. And uh, basically they, that came about uh. The, out from the ordinance. And also, uh, an Iowa State. Uh, Extension Service uh. Sheet that's basically on decorum for board of adjustments, meetings and hearings. And so I gave all of the new board of adjustments, well, all of them, the articles from the ordinance that pertain to. Uh, meetings and hearings. And uh. So they went through those, we had. Three meetings that uh, basically, basically looked at. Uh. Drafting the meeting and hearing procedure sheet. And uh, I, I don't remember the date, but uh, the final document was approved by them so that. They could follow the ordinance correctly. And they use that document at this uh, uh, meeting on the seventeenth. Uh, that meeting. Was. Ba- basically began with the discussion that the original. Application. For, from Cole Anderson, for the quarry, the original application would be continued, would be used again. And uh, so there's not a new application, it's the original application and uh, so. And, and Cole Anderson was here, uh, along with many others, but uh, he basically explained that they were reapplying for that. And uh, at that point in time, after a little more discussion. Uh. It was determined that we no longer could continue in an open session in that meeting. It did not meet the criteria of that new document procedure, nor the ordinance. There were items in there. Uh. That did not meet the criteria as a hearing. There can be no. There can be no testimony about a special exception use. There can be no testimony prevented, presented to anybody but the board of adjustments. And that uh. That has to be accompanied with newspaper. Public notice as well as. Uh, contacting the. Residents around or adjacent to the property of application within two hundred feet. That had not been done because the, it had been uh. It had been uh, set up as a meeting and uh, not as a hearing. And so at that point in time. The uh, the, went into closed session. And uh, for, for uh. Discussion of the, of the application. The results, as you can see, these are the minutes, these minutes were sent out to the board of adjustments last week. And brought back to me and these are the approved minutes by the board of adjustment members. And in those minutes, you can see that. Uh. Trying to remember which page it is. Uh, there will be a uh. A hearing now. Set for the first of July. To uh. Present again. The application to the board of adjustments. Again, um. The newspaper has been notified, should be in the newspaper uh, today and then also the adjacent landowners have been notified. In the procedural document by the board of adjustment, they put in a requirement that all materials that would be presented at the hearing. Any documentation would have to be to the board of the adjustments members five days before. The uh, hearing, which would provide for their time to review that information. Uh, in the past, we've had situations where during a hearing, people would present documentation and be an inch thick. And so. Obviously not enough time for board of adjustment members to look at that. And uh, be able to apply it to the uh. To the hearing and the testimonies involved. The hearing itself will follow the directions of that document, there will be. There will be a uh, procedural and purpose. Described to anyone that's there, it's open site, open uh, hearing and that uh, procedure and purpose for the application will be uh, given. Also the agenda. And then both the. And then both the applicant and anyone. That uh, wants to testify will be able to do that. That uh, hearing will be held in the courtroom. And uh. It's at it's gonna be at two o'clock in the afternoon, but it's anticipated there. Maybe more people that would fit into this room, and so. That's why we're having it there. Um. As far as the July eleventh. It's July eleventh, as I remember. There is a hearing that was postponed from. Uh, probably a month ago. That was postponed to the July eleventh. And that hearing is on uh, filed injunction. Uh, Board of Supervisors, attorneys filed injunction. And uh, this would be for. Not allowing the operation of the quarry. Uh, at least for a short period of time, I don't remember. How it's written, but then there would also be later on. A long-term injunction. So they're kind of linked together. And uh, because obviously. Uh, the July first. Hearing decision. Would be affecting the July July eleventh hearing. And I just remind you that uh. That uh, two things. Your board, the Board of Supervisors, after after a decision has thirty days. To uh, bring to the Board of Adjustments a re- request for review. The Board of Adjustments has. The option of. Denying that re- that review. Or approving that review. Which could also mean that they would review. Any conditions or safeguards that have already been applied or could be applied. And so. Uh. The results of of that review request then. Would. According to the uh, ordinance would then require going to the uh, district court level. Is it district court level? I believe so. And so and in in the ordinance. Those uh, the decision can be appealed. By anyone. Doesn't have to be. You know, somebody that's just directly involved. The ordinance says any anybody from the uh. From the county. And uh, so. Hopefully, uh, within the next month or so, we'll know a little bit more. And uh, what possibly may. Happen after that. And uh. So, uh. I would. Certainly invite you to be at the at either hearing or both. And so you can have direct uh. Information. There will be uh. Minutes taken and it will be recorded. And uh, so I'd invite you to be there. Lot of concerned citizens. And a lot of concerns as far as uh, the applicant of being able to operate as soon as possible. And so. I don't think I forgot anything. Hopefully you got any questions.
That's a pretty good synopsis. You did a pretty good job.
Well, it's been it's been very clear. From past experiences. That we we want to make sure that the procedures. Are following ordinance and their procedural document. So, yeah, yeah, obviously, we don't want to have this or others. Not continue on. Simply because of. In some cases, as we've had, can do things that were not in our control, things we didn't know about. That kind of thing, so we're doing our very best. And I say we, that means me and the Board of Adjustments. They're uh. As you know, four of them are new. They're uh, I've educated them as much as possible with those ordinance articles. And explained all that, so I feel I'm really confident that they're well educated. And uh, ready to hear any meeting or hearing that we would have in the future. Any other questions on that?
Like. Given everything that you gave a very good synopsis of. Right, yes.
Then the second item I have deals with our Comprehensive Plan Committee. As you remember that uh, Midas. Is hired to help or to create the comprehensive plan. The new comprehensive plan and a new ordinance. We discussed this before. That process is extremely slow. For many reasons, but uh. I would say probably through. Problems with Midas. Of having the. As we've discussed, the number of people to process the things they're working on. I've uh, put an email into Stacy Lynch again. Haven't gotten response back. Uh, of of any thoughts? You may remember that we've kind of put on hold some of the meetings because of. Uh, harvest time or planning time. When I've had some contacts from committee members, you know, where are we going with this? And so. By my recommendation, not theirs, but my recommendation. Is that we would come up with a date. For the comprehensive plan to be completed. And a date for then. A new ordinance to be completed. I don't mean to put that pressure on them. But. You remember our moratorium. On those energy things is um. Basically related to those items. We put a moratorium, as you recall, one year or until the comprehensive plan and ordinance, new ordinance are completed. And I've had calls. From energy companies asking about that. And that's the response that I give them. So they are related.
When you say put pressure on and set dates, that is to Midas.
To Midas.
Well.
The last time I heard, I thought they didn't have anybody that was working on this thing because they were so short-staffed.
Well, they're short-staffed, the original person that started with Stacy Lynch.
Understand.
Then they gave that responsibility to a young man that was just hired.
Okay.
And then he quit.
Yep.
So then it went back to Stacy. We had one meeting since she's taken over again. And then that was like in maybe April. That I I talked with her again. And we haven't heard anything back.
Well, I guess.
My frustration is.
There's still sorts of that.
They are, they are, and uh.
But us putting pressure on someone that the short-staffed is probably just gonna give us. A second seat in the bus anyway. I mean.
Uh, she Stacy knows that we're in a in a.
We're in buying, yeah, so we needed it yesterday.
We got a meeting Wednesday, I'll talk to her again.
I mean, I'm all for trying to put a a date, but.
My concern was the moratorium.
I understand.
You know, so.
But it's ineffective until this is completed. And I know we'd like to have it completed.
Yeah, and I would say probably the comprehensive plan process is probably two-thirds done. Now that will include uh, public hearings. And uh, input. Obviously, the final document then is is approved by the Board of Supervisors. We can't go to the ordinance. Until the comprehensive plan is commit commit completed, as you remember. So. And I honestly, I don't know what that date would be, I'm. You know, I'd like to have it, the comprehensive plan done. Before uh, harvest, but. Because many of the people on our committee. Uh, you know, are dealing with agricultural, uh, you know. Things, so uh, I'm just throwing that out there.
I would reach out to her and ask her on a timeframe if she could say if we're two-thirds done, then let's say how long is it gonna get to? Take us to get to that other third, so. If she tells us, well, easily by. August, I think it. We can pick a date from there, but if she tells us we're opening in December.
Right.
We aren't gonna change.
No, and I'm not asking you to set a date here, though.
I understand.
I'm I'm just saying, there needs to be. And and as Dave said, if he's gonna maybe just leave it to Dave to find out more information when you're there, if that's okay.
Right.
And then we'll know a little more.
Yep.
Uh, I think she was gone last week and I sent an email, I haven't heard back. And so it's a it's a very difficult situation for them and for us. But I'm just looking down the road if. Energy companies are going, hey. You know, what's the deal here?
Right, the deal is stated.
And so.
When this gets completed.
Yeah, they don't necessarily know all that, they'll. And I'm not saying I won't take their phone calls, cause I answer every question they have. But it is gonna be a factor if we don't get.
Right.
Uh, get completed, so. Okay?
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Okay. Move on down to approve cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, vapor retail permit for July through September of twenty twenty-four. And April. From June of twenty twenty-five for the country, but.
This is a new application. That we haven't had before and we're just requesting for those. Periods of time.
They don't show cigarette.
Yeah, or cigars or. Probably baby.
Oh, uh, it looks like. Why through September and then April through January.
In all their insurance.
They have everything.
Is in order. That we know of.
Yes. They just had their alcohol permit renewed, so. All that was submitted to. The state.
I guess as long as everything is in order, I would make a motion to approve.
I would say, yes, as long as it's in order, I second that. We run it this out there now.
You see.
It's okay. Oh, there it is. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Eric. I think it's important. As it turned out, I didn't have anything for official extra meetings this past week. Oh, yeah, nothing related to report.
They had one on uh, Tuesday. Uh. Conference call for the Edmond Finance meeting. And that was fairly quick, so it's all I had.
I didn't have nothing official. Lot of each, nothing official there.
Did you have anything, Rick?
Uh, I just attended the uh, the uh, Board of the United States meeting. At the courthouse, the only thing I did this last week, uh. So that's that's why I attended.
You got anything else to bring up?
Yeah.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Crazy.